World Call. Jessica. Karen.
Rod.
Jim.
Here.
And also, the meeting has gone properly in place?
Yes.
Brian, the Pledge of Aides? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Want to volunteer to read the mission statement?
I will. The Montmoreberry School District in partnership with the community is dedicated to nurturing, educating, challenging all students, preparing and empowering them to be productive, responsible, self-reliant members of society.
Jim, moving on to two. For the world of the agenda. Tom.
Second. Well, that'd be a bad start. Fails for lack of a second.
I'll share my Jessica. Second for Rod. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to two. You have a little bit of a live theme. Twenty twenty-two Board Meeting, regular executive.
Motion to approve. I will say.
Motion by Rod, seconded by Jim. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to three. Addressing the Board, three A is our school news.
Just a few items. First of all, good to see everybody. Welcome. Thanks. I just saw you, some of you just a few minutes ago. Couple of things. Number one, online registration for the upcoming school year began. Now that we're in the month of July, it's hard to believe that's happening, but it is. Fall sports, as you know, will be starting up soon as we approach the month of August. You may know about the Assembly Forum, so I just wanted to remind everybody that the eightieth Assembly Candidate Forum will take place on July twenty-fifth in the high school cafeteria from six to seven thirty. The summer school, the last week of summer school for the second session will be done at the end of this week on Friday. And since I have the platform, one additional item to share with you is we completed our annual school audit this past week. Again, thanks to everybody that is involved with that process and managing budgets throughout the year. It went really well once again, and I'm so appreciative that we have people that are dedicated to managing the budget. It makes my job better, and so appreciated, so thank you.
Thanks. Board members, any school news? All right. Moving on to three B, citizens' comments. Moving on to four, where is our personnel transactions? Please note there was an intendant.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Rod, seconded by Jessica. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to five, our consent agenda. Is there anything anybody would like to pull up? I will entertain a motion. Tom.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, seconded by Rod, to approve the consent agenda. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Brad, I'm assuming you're aye in the middle.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe here you are. Moving on to six, discussion items. Six A is our committee member reports, starting with, oh, well, Leah's not here for community and legislative, so I think we'll wait on that one. Can you make notes, put that on the agenda for next week when Leah's back?
Got it.
Moving on to six B, report of CISA two, the annual meeting.
Jessica. So, I went to the CISA two convention, June twenty-first, in Whitewater. For any of you who have not ever attended, it is a very procedural meeting. The intent of the meeting, like the school district, they are operated, run by a board. The purpose of the meeting is to any openings to fill those vacancies. So, all the districts are all grouped by clusters, make sure every cluster has a representative. There's a few votes, that's it. They opened with a guest speaker who was from M3 Insurance, and she spoke about cyber insurance, the need for it, and the different bits that were required to have, in order to get cyber insurance, some of the things that we've been starting to hit from up here, the multi-factor identification. And in case of emergency, I thought this was maybe one of the most interesting things, and Scott probably already knows this, and I'm sure Dr. Stenhouse does as well, DBI does have a cyber response team in case of emergency, and people have indicated they are very helpful, useful, and helpful. But that was, that was about it. Mostly, it was nice to meet other school board members from local districts, because meeting itself was procedural. That's all, yeah.
Questions for Jessica?
One.
All right. Thanks, Jessica, for representing us at that meeting. Much appreciated. Moving on to succeed, information and advocacy report, and my cutting edge in innovative learning practices, integrate technology and instructional learning practices. Mrs. Straka.
Hey, thank you. Here we go here. That works. Okay. Thank you for being honest, Scott. I didn't prepare a formal presentation, just want to talk about three major points from the act's reports this round. So, the first piece was indicator one, which is how we integrate technology and instructional and learning practices. And as in previous reports, I have shared over time that we had a pretty structured cohort system of learning for our staff, whereas we were integrating our one-to-one Chromebook devices, we had teachers going through, like, either one training or two training as they use those Chromebooks. Then the 2021 school year through, we did a bunch of new things, and we had to abandon our cohort model to get everyone up to speed out at once on some of the platforms that we were using in our school district. Then the 2122 school year, this past school year is also unique, and we were trying to integrate the new practices from the 2021 school year with some older practices or some previous practices in previous school years that gave deeper to technology, and teachers really were trying to blend and meld that old and new this school year. So, even though people would think, you know, school's relatively probably normal this year, staff, many staff members are really trying to combine the old and the new, and yet again, another year, revise what they're doing with technology. So hopefully, next year, it'll become a... Another area, indicator two, which was how we were incorporating research-based and innovative curriculum instructional practices into our classrooms. And within the act's report, I have two main areas that I wanted to point out from this past school year and actually in previous school years. Co-teaching, you heard Brian talk about it applying his committees, and during a meeting to try to be, talk about co-teaching as well, whether in education committee or in this whole board meeting as well. With co-teaching, we have special education staff, or ELL staff, or reading specialists in a classroom, working shoulder to shoulder with their teachers, but really trying to pull away from the pull-out model, where these students get this curriculum outside of the classroom, and really making sure all students are receiving the universal curriculum. And it's been getting better and better as the years go on. I highlighted in the reports, the second paragraph of that section, the intermediate center. And the intermediate center is a neat building where we can do co-teaching, because if you've had, if you've had students in there, you know, you have a classroom, a classroom, and have a removable wall. Well, in our co-talk classrooms, that wall is removed, we have teacher A and teacher B, and then we have our special education teacher in that classroom. So they're really able to differentiate groups and work with kids, all three teachers work with all kids. And we've been seeing some really neat data in our, in our intermediate center classrooms because of that. The high school, middle school are also doing co-teaching, and they're still monitoring, I think, as well, because of the way the middle school, high school is structured. Peer-to-peer classroom visits was the last thing I'd like to point out in the report. So with the launch of our new elementary math program, Bridges, we knew we wanted to set our teachers up for success. It couldn't just be an August thirtieth training, and then we were done. So we've been working with CISA two, Stephen Yalowick is in the top picture on the right side there, and Patricia Johnson, who I don't have pictured from CISA two, they've been working with our staff throughout the year, and doing something that we call peer-to-peer classroom visits, where I believe that's Molly Fulmer. Molly Fulmer goes into her peers' classroom, she watches her peer teach for about twenty minutes or so, or five minutes. Stephen is there as well. Then Molly and Stephen go out into the hallway and debrief on what Molly is seeing to really inform Molly's practice when she goes into her classroom. So it's, it's not necessarily Stephen and Molly giving the teacher the observer feedback. Molly's learning from that practice. And we're able to get through many classrooms pretty fast, where teachers can see what their peers are doing, learn from them, and then either take that into their own classroom, or they can all debrief during their team meetings. This wasn't the original direction, and the pandemic sort of made us go this direction, because we didn't have subs, so we couldn't do half-day trains or full-day trains and get subs. So we had to pivot, but the pivot has to turn out really good. You can see some of the feedback and comments that we've had from our staff. Every time we had, had staff members do this activity, do this learning, we provided them a feedback survey. You can see some of the, what worked well, the aha moments, and even how we can improve the experience for teachers that next time around. So we got buy-in from a couple, and then a couple more, and then a couple more, and a couple more. So it's been really neat to see, and now we're going to be doing this, this upcoming school year as the standard for our, for our teacher learning, in our instructional coaches that you all have allowed us to have with Esther Fund, so hopefully we can continue with maybe operational referendum, but we'll see. We'll continue this work internally, so it's been a great start and great launch for our math program to have this opportunity for our staff.
That's the report. Questions for Sarah? All right. Thank you, Sarah.
Thanks, Sarah.
Don't go too far. Yep. Six D is our business in the backyard presentation. Sarah will lead us through that as well.
Yeah, so I was fortunate to work with Rachel in the Chamber during Good Morning Mount Hall. Good Morning Mount Hall, a couple months ago. And Good Morning Mount Hall is put on by the Chamber monthly, and just highlighting the greatness that we have within our community. And the school district was asked to offer about a ten-minute presentation, and I'm like, well, I was already going to be offering similar presentations to the board, so I was able to offer this same presentation to the Chamber members. So with the business in the backyard, we were thinking about how do we bring more academic and career planning to our students, right? We have academic readiness, AP classes, dual credit classes, those kinds of things. We have college and career readiness opportunities, whether it's through our CTE department, whether it is the youth apprenticeship, whether it's through some whole curriculums. So we have those for our kiddos. And then social emotional readiness, really making sure those social emotional learning skills are there for our kids, because that's what they're going to need as they move on to whatever career, college pathway that they're looking for. When we talk about careers, the Wisconsin Department of Workforce Development divides career clusters into these sixteen areas, so I'm just offering that, so you can see those. And then because we, because there's these career clusters, because we really want to help kiddos with their academic and career planning, as you guys have probably heard before, we started our business in our backyard tours. And this is just a quick summary, it's a partnership between the schools and local businesses to provide not only students, but we've got staff to do this as well, they have better person that you want to know in the backyard. We want kids to know what future skills and opportunities are there. So as you can see, we, our business tour spans throughout the whole community. You see the east side, the central, and the far west, we went out into the Barnabell area as well, to tour some of the businesses. The next slide talks about what those businesses are. Our tours have grown. We started with just four tours.
Four?
Yeah, well, twelve, twelve partners. But we've grown as we have not only had larger class sizes come through, our younger class of about two hundred this year, but also we wanted to make sure we had enough of a variety of career clusters, career options for students. I had the privilege, prior to the tours, to going to many of the companies and walking through what we're looking for for students to experience. So we asked those partner, partnered organizations of businesses to talk about the company's history, the journey, the services, and the largest piece, I think, for number six, for everybody, even us, right, is the need for a quality workforce. And we started these tours four or five years ago. That was a big thing, and it's even bigger now, right? So how, how can we help businesses with that quality workforce piece they're all facing? As I said, we've been growing our tours, we've had new partnerships. So this year, we welcomed Telig Auto, for example, and Western BioAg, McNeamane, and several others as well, but just have pictures of a few, so you can see those. We are also just highlighting some, some new partners, some newer partners, and Clash Year Sign, our studio signed on, the State Lake Cross Plains has been a continued partner, they've been a partner since our first inception of this. And then this year, we added Premier Building Solutions as well. Those have strong village partnerships. You can see not only the Montmore Fire Department, but the Montmore Police Department, and the welcome summer in the Chamber as well. So those businesses are there. A key part of this is I just can't talk at kids, right? That's, they're just going to tune out. So I just want to highlight a couple tours I was able to attend. So Upland Hills Health does a really good job. They have four, four or five stations they set up, and they really offer a good variety of occupations, whether the top left is looking at human resources, to, just want over, looking at diet additions, to OT and PT, the upper right, and then the bottom right, looking at nursing, so I can see what our rates and checking that. So really odd hands-on activities so kids can see what they're doing. Same thing at the Kennedy Little Lickies. Brendan Fritz did a really nice job, talking with kids, explaining what's happening, giving them some play opportunities, just like kids, talking to them a little more, and giving them more play opportunities. So there's some great partners. And then, as you all know, because we've talked about youth apprenticeship in the past, we had the advocacy report on youth apprenticeship, but we also wanted to highlight the youth apprenticeship opportunities at the Chamber events, and we make their quarters know that we have opportunity for kiddos, juniors and seniors, to go into their business to learn that true, that career as a possible opportunity for them in the future. And this is a chart we have before in our advocacy report, just letting Chamber members know that youth apprenticeship is growing, we love to have a partnership with them.
What's the status of the CAS group?
Status of the CAS group? The CAS group is currently meeting through the CTE plan the CTE department has developed. So, monthly-ish?
Monthly.
Ish, since spring.
Long break with COVID.
Yeah.
And now they're back meeting again.
Right, good, awesome, good. It's a good group.
Yeah. And Rachel is also starting tomorrow night. We're bringing back, started the vibe, but a little different direction with the Business Education Partnership, different name, but working with the Village, the Chamber and Schools for the Business Partnership that's actually starting tomorrow night.
Awesome.
So just wanted to offer this because you guys have seen the Education for Employment Plan, so I just like to highlight a portion of it as I, as you reach through that report, as that report is, you're steering forward. I'll wind up with this, so.
This is awesome. It's great that you got to do this presentation. Did anybody immediately reach out and say, ooh?
One person, yeah, one person did ask to join the tour.
Awesome.
And it's something we don't have on the tour yet, so.
That's great. I'm sure it'll keep going.
Sorry. Thank you.
So we're really lucky that Rachel is at the Chamber.
Very, very lucky Rachel's at the Chamber.
This is the kind of stuff that she's really, really committed to, and she's very, very good at, so.
So hi, congratulations for the meeting.
All right.
Other questions for Sarah? All right, thanks, Sarah. We can move on to six E, our draft of the annual meeting agenda. Mr. Dion, if you can.
Yeah, so if you had the fortunate opportunity to be at previous annual meetings, you'll recognize that the format has not changed. Days have changed. For the good of the group, the annual meeting this year is on October eighth at the IC at six PM. Boardman Clark will be there as our power lamentarian, as they've been in the past. You'll see it up on the screen. It's a, it's a meeting for the electors, so we encourage anybody that's able to attend to please do so. And as you know, toward the end of the agenda, we'll be looking at the budget and looking at resolution three for the adoption of a tax levy. Questions? Look pretty familiar, right? Yeah.
Questions, board members? On to our action items. So seven A, consideration of the annual review of the Education for Employment Plan. Mrs. Straka, go back in your house.
So as I mentioned, just a few minutes ago, Education for Employment Plan, this is something that each year, the team members that are listed on page two of this come together. So we met one or two times in the spring to review our plan, to make any technical updates, technical updates. We didn't have many technical updates. You all within your board packet, probably can see the redline version if you wanted to look at that. But overall, just near the bottom, we had, on the last page, we had, we go over. Thank you. So I'm just going to walk through a couple of things. So at the Education Committee meeting, Jessica, you had the question about the number of students, the subsets of students who enter the workforce immediately after graduation, and we need to report out on that, collect that data. So we reached out to counselors, they're off in the summer, but that email is there to circle back with them. But we also said to the Education Committee that we didn't want to lose sight of this, so even though we may not collect this right now, we wanted to add it in the plan for corporation in the future, we just didn't want to lose that. So that was the change from the Education Committee. Another addition, actually working with Bart and the CAS group that Rod had mentioned, that the high school is working to explore the idea of career pathways or academies, which students will think about a certain pathway, whether career-themed pathway, automotive, and then seeing the full chart of classes, opportunities available to them during, as they create their four-year plan. So we wanted to make sure that was there. So that work is being looked at, and more, some more to come on that, probably next year's, next summer, around this time, sharing where that is. So those are the two big changes. Also, at the high school level, the two bullets on the right-hand side here, the CT Career Fair, was implemented this past school year, great huge success, and then looking at a job fair maybe next spring as well, to really beef up career exploration opportunities. Those are some of the main pieces. Oh, and, you hear us all over this meeting, we were, I don't know why we didn't in the past, but we didn't really have many community members a part of this planning or future planning. So we asked Rachel to join the creation revision of this plan for the year as well. And I think the work that will start tomorrow will definitely be visible as we look forward at this time.
So I have a question about the career pathways or academies. Just wanted to get, because I think maybe, maybe this isn't what you're thinking, but like Middleton has a, if you're going to, thinking you're going to a four-year college, you take this college prep course and you kind of select that pathway at the beginning, so like when you're in eighth grade. Is that kind of what, what you're thinking there, or you're just thinking about something a little more flexible?
Yeah, it's not like, this, it's not really like true major type of thing, right? The answer would be, no, it's more of like, hey, you want more automotive, hey, you want to be a chemist, hey, you want to be an electrician. This is a math class, these are reading classes, these are lectures you should take to get there.
Okay. Or to satisfy your interests.
Correct.
Possibly.
Or work experience opportunities to get there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, thanks. I was sometimes wondering if maybe that is a little too rigid, and you know, and kids can change their minds, or, you know, fifteen, relationship. That'd be cool.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Other questions for Sarah? All right, thank you. Oh, wait, this is action. You are ready. I will entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, seconded by Rod. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to seven D, second reading of revisions to policy three, four, three, point four, two, early post-secondary opportunities. Mrs. Straka, again, you just, don't go far. You got a lot to.
Yep, actually, I know, sorry about that. So early post-secondary opportunities. So per WASB review, I was pointing out that we had some ambiguous language, where we seem like we're allowed up to thirty-six total credits, eighteen start-ultimate credits, and eighteen early-stage credits, program credits. That's really not the case. Students can receive up to eighteen combined credits between the two programs outlined in this policy, so we just had to clean up that ambiguity there. And that's committee members, our Education Committee. So Scott, you want to go back? Yeah, thank you, right there. This language of the student is not at risk, or something like that, and our committee members didn't like that language, so we just said the student is not in the criteria for being identified as a child at risk, which Brian is working, the SOC committee looked at the ATRIS plan today, and then, and in August, then the full board will review that the ATRIS plan, which defines what a child at risk is. These are some of the two-way rocks in this quick revision.
Board members, questions for Sarah, or all entertain a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Rod, seconded by Jessica. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we will move on to seven C, second reading of revisions to policy three, four, one, point three, one, even broken and developed. Mrs. Straka, again.
So in order to provide more clarity, our parents or guardians are providing communication updates and curriculum exemption opportunities, we wanted to update some language within this policy, the redline version, the redline version, you can see what those changes were. So just make sure the exemption language is clear, and the annual notice language is clear. So actually, in a couple weeks, we'll be working on our annual notices that go on our website and in the Montmore mail. And we do send, we do include, you can build a policy every year, but it wasn't stated in our plan, so we just want to be crystal clear as to what we do and what we do within our policy. Those are the main changes.
Thank you, Sarah.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Rod, seconded by Jim. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right, moving on to seven D, second reading for revision to policy four, four, three, point one, district-wide dress code. And now we get Mr. Johnson.
Right. This was just a few quick changes. One, the biggest piece to it is that hats and hoods will be allowed starting in third grade, so at the IC, instead of before, it was at the sixth grade. The staff at the IC did a whole analysis of, is it, is it worth it? And they all determined we, in full, or mostly full agreement, that we should allow it, so it's worth it.
Presenting. Thank you, Brian. Questions for Brian? Other ones, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, seconded by Jim. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to seven E, second reading revisions to and reading of policy 522.7, internet use. And this will be, oh, I was coming down at this time, okay? Probably taking, I guess, it's a break.
So with this policy, one of the big things that we wanted to do is broaden it. It was internet safety, but we know that really it goes beyond that in its technology and different apps and things that we're using, so hence the name change there. We're also looking to move it into the 700s because it was only in the personnel policy area where it does incorporate staff and student language in there. So we wanted to just make sure we're doing that as well. It is really broadening that, broadening the language to incorporate the technology, and just made a couple adjustments of the lawyers that WISB has recommended.
All right. Any questions? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, seconded by Rod. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to eight, citizens comments. All right. Hearing none. Move on to nine, future agenda items. They are listed there. But as always, if you have something you'd like to be added to the agenda, please let Dr. Schnell or myself know. We'll get that. The very long list of future agenda items. Moving on to 10, our schedule of next meeting. I think it looks correct. Anything to point out here that you know is bad, or changes? Perfect. Moving on to 11.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Rod, seconded by Jessica to adjourn. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Outstanding. Well done, Scott.